I'll start drop being seven o'clock.
Okay.
Drop's still mine.
Everybody messes. They're rolling.
There it is.
Being seven o'clock.
Okay, being seven o'clock. We are gonna start the Dunbar and Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And gentlemen, I have a little stop with some minutes from previous meetings.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three as amended?
I'll second Justin's. Motion?
A discussion on those? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dave?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of November sixteenth.
I'll second. I'll second that.
Okay.
One more section, Mike.
Okay, which ones? We have two of them.
Yes, or do the first one for me?
Okay. And uh.
Time is eight oh.
Eight seven, eight seven, eight, no, that's.
Eight oh seven.
Eight oh, nine oh seven. We have a nine oh seven.
Nine oh seven.
Okay, those are the first ones?
I'll second those.
Okay, second by Justin. Any uh, any discussion on those? Okay, those are not to be sealed. All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the second non-public meeting minutes of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. At what time?
Nine thirty-five.
Nine thirty-five.
Any discussion on those?
Maybe the second or first.
Oh, those are gonna be unsealed.
Okay.
All in favor?
You got a vote, uh, second on that?
Yeah, second.
I did.
David?
All in favor?
Aye.
And we got one more.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of November sixteen. What do you, do we have three of them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three of them?
Yep.
Time?
This was also nine thirty-five. It was pretty, probably nine thirty-seven. It was, I'm making a, depending on change, nine thirty-seven. They were not at the same time.
Okay.
So as amended?
As amended.
I'll second those.
Hang on, we didn't, we've got a. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The last set, Dave. I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay.
That's the last set.
I'll make a motion to approve the. Non-public, November sixteenth, nine thirty-seven meeting minutes.
The ninth?
Excuse me, the ninth? No, seven back again.
It should be the ninth.
Yeah.
The ninth.
That's the last.
That's the last one.
Okay, Mike. November ninth at eight seven fourteen PM.
I'll second those. I have to admit, those are transcribed just perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No ceiling. For the record, I say that because I transcribed those minutes.
Compulsive liar.
Say again.
Wait a second, as amended.
As amended, yeah. That was correct. Okay.
They were perfect after I amended.
Oh, okay. Alright, we got those done. Okay, I have minutes approved. I'm gonna open this up for public comment first. Back row, public comment, back, public comment. Most of everyone else is on the agenda, so thank you. Stay, be a spare with me. Bring it back to the, the agenda. The first one we have is the welfare director for the twenty twenty-four budget.
Hi, I'm Debbie Giesel, for the.
Lockland, Jim.
Thank you, nice to meet you too. I met David, but.
Yep, nice to meet you.
Um, I'm proposing for a slight increase for twenty twenty-four for the budget for welfare. I think you have the, you have the lines in front of you right now, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So typically, there has been a line for Salvation Army and the Dunbar and Corruption Church, which I think we should, um, continue to have around. The Community Action Program has actually requested an increase of three thousand dollars for this year. Um, the deputy and myself have the three percent that's in, is that in the minute, in the?
In the call up.
That one, yes.
Yeah.
And then for direct assistance, we've had it at five thousand for a few years, but I've seen a lot of, like, increase in lately. So I'm, I'm concerned because we're over the budget this year already, that we might need that next year. So that's the reason I'm asking for that.
You think that's low, or should we consider maybe another, another, bring it up to seven thousand?
Well, I think, I think, I think we should, should try that and we always can take the money that we allocate for, you know, Salvation Army or Dunbar and if we, we have to use it instead of pay it out, we just wait till the end of the year.
Can I ask you on the Community Action Program, when did they notify you they were going out?
Um, I have to literally. It sounds we've been the same for the last three years. They keep billing us, um, less, so I just pay them about that they bill us.
Right.
Because it says on the letter, they've requested three thousand dollars. Yeah. In their letter dated October twenty-second. It says that they, um, assisted over twenty-two hundred, twenty-two Dunbar and households, and it was forty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars that they assisted with. So I think it's a, a good thing to try to fund, but.
Yeah. Of course, we're not part of any of their screening, so who knows what they're doing too. That's the insulation programs in a way.
They do, they said that they help families. I don't know what. No, I meant they send this you, they send you an actual bill? Yes, they will invoice me and the last invoice they billed us, twenty-three fifty.
Yeah, we budgeted three thousand last year.
Because that cover letter says these.
Let's uh, let's be hopeful.
Would you like to see it?
No, I, I, it's good, it's good. I have no other questions, gentlemen?
No questions. I think that's for you, you know?
I just wanna say, I heard, uh, we have, through the great fund, here are great reports. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Um, we've had a history in Dunbar and of some challenges in the past. I'll leave it at that. And we had a sudden, um, loss this year, and thank you for stepping up the plate and helping us out.
Welcome, thank you for letting me.
Okay. Now, we have, okay, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Okay. And, uh, we'll deliberate, we'll probably be closed, but we, this is not deliberation time. We just asked questions so we can inform, and then we get the pencils and our shades on and we look at it later on, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for coming in for that.
Thank you. Would you like to see you all again?
It's nice to put a name with a face. Okay, old home day. Do you have one on? No, I got it.
Absolutely. Do we wanna do rec first?
Well, it's okay. They're okay. Keep in order.
Which, which one's first? Old home day, got it. We'd have to have a whole meeting about taking that over. Hey, be nice, Dave. The chair wouldn't like it. Great gentleman? Get on the floor. Well, who's gonna be speaking to it?
I'll start.
Okay.
No, no, we're, we're looking at a budget in, in grease. And, um, nominally going, going from, uh, the, the, uh, the five, five thousand seven hundred, we, we have been using up to maybe sixty-five hundred. You are gonna be the ones who are gonna judge that finally, but, but, um, no, we've, uh, a couple of, a couple of thoughts. We've been, been at the five thousand seven hundred now for about four years or so. And we're noticing that inflation is, i- is, um, is showing up as a fact that things are, are, are getting to cost, you know? And, um, and we, we, we have also people who have done some donations to, to, uh, support, you know? And, um, so. That's my opening statement, so if you've got questions now.
No, you, uh, actually, I anticipated revenues of five hundred and thirty dollars at the end of last year.
Well, we had anticipated revenues of five ninety. We had to give two refunds.
Okay.
Which brought it down to five thirty.
Okay.
Yeah, we had, came, came, came in just under, just under five thousand seven hundred net.
Okay.
But, but that was, uh.
So essentially, you expended almost all the dollars you took in and was allotted, correct?
Yeah, we had actually had six hundred the year before that we took in vendors, and last year it was five ninety each, but then we wound up giving back to, to the bodies. So we were ten dollars short of the year before.
That's, that's pretty sweet. I mean, I'm saying you're very, almost spot on with it.
Yeah, our, um, overall expenditures. We're, we're around, uh, six, six hundred at that, that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six hundred two twenty-one was the actual.
And so you returned nine dollars to the general fund. I love it.
Six thousand two twenty-one.
Yeah, six thousand. Fortunately, they had the table fee money.
The table fee, exactly. Um, gentlemen, do you have any questions? I have no issues with this at this point.
I have no questions.
No, it's, it's a pretty small increase they're asking for.
Yeah.
Then maybe we could ask for.
More?
You're gonna ask for, but you're gonna get cut off. Everybody noticed they have tax bill one up, right?
Yes.
We're here to stop that.
Well, maybe all the people who volunteered help on it could benefit by having their taxes go down a little bit.
No, that's not how it works. You know better than that.
I know.
It'd be like if we don't ask, if people pay more, right?
That's, that's Jersey humor that I don't seem to be able to escape from.
I get you.
One of the problems is that where the entertainment's, particularly for kids and stuff, where a couple of years ago it was a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars, now it's four fifty. It doubled in a couple of years and it's, it just keeps going up. These guys want four hundred and fifty dollars an hour to show up, you know? And no matter how much we shop.
But I just, I wanna say, overall, it was a great success this year. And you guys worked hard. I saw a lot of her work going into it, and the thing is, uh, I, I, people come up to me and say, this is fantastic. The prices for the, I mean, the vendors, I've seen more vendors in the past.
Right. Well, we had two drop out.
Yeah.
And then two, and then two get a re, so we would have, we would have had a full bore, but two didn't show up, didn't show up.
The fact I won a bottle of wine made my day even better.
You won a bottle of wine?
It was, it was a vendor over there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
He was the only one that put in for it.
No, but overall.
He was fun.
Sometimes you think that. Uh, it was very good overall, so thank you for the committee for what you did this past year, and I look forward to having another great day.
Yeah.
Although the thing is, uh, selectmen, we're getting pretty stingy with our labor costs. Fish on ice cream?
Oh.
We may have a price increase.
Well, maybe you could.
Actually, I was gonna help on my back, Dave, but now I have to go home.
Want to get bottom of the pile and all the keep by the.
Yeah.
Maybe we could let you eat a little more, right?
There you go, there you go.
Oh, there you go.
But the thing is, uh, we, we got on the, we got your budget, so thank you very much. It seems, uh, reasonable. And we'll, we'll, we'll put it on the scrutiny and, uh, when we close out the budget, when we make the budget, okay? Thank you.
I have one suggestion, actually. Can we list the flavors of ice cream? I don't know how many times I had to say all the flavors. Every single person, even when the person's right beyond the other person, I have to listen.
Either that or putting on tape or cord on it.
You had to remember that for every customer?
I didn't remember it always.
I'll tell Tom.
I just told the ones I could remember. I look at the table, I'm like, we got vanilla, we got chocolate.
You know, the, the, the favorite part is, how much I owe you? Nothing. Have a nice day. That was the best part.
The other part of this, we don't have to elaborate, but Tom is looking for, um, where he's been paid out of pocket for the ice cream.
Yeah. Oh, don't.
Three hundred bucks. So we hope to cover that in that.
Please, you shouldn't, you shouldn't pay anything out.
He's been gone after years, on his own pocket.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And then he, he also supplies a lot of tables and chairs and that kind of stuff.
And he, I heard he got some of those new folding chairs, uh, it was a good find last year. He picked up, that was a great asset to the town. And several chairs he can use up in the upstairs, uh, library area. So thank you. So kudos, please extend the kudos to him too.
Yeah, he doesn't charge for any of that, so.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right on. I need the rec commission. Come on up.
Christine.
Christine.
Yes, Clay.
Oh, okay. That's, that's what I thought it was.
Perfect. Okay, sounds great.
Okay, you get the floor.
All right. So.
For the record, say your name.
Christine Clay.
Okay.
I'm the chair for the rec committee. And, um, thus far, we've spent four hundred eighty-two for Halloween. We're getting ready for the tree lighting and you've seen some lights already on the common. Um, and those expenses are coming, but anticipating that, um, it will be over the planned five hundred that we've planned for this year. Um, have a committee meeting next week, so we're gonna vote to see if we can cover any additional expenses out of our revolving account. But what I'm proposing for twenty twenty-four is that we increase Halloween to seven hundred and holiday to fifteen hundred for lights, extension cords, and characterites.
And as you recall, last year when you came in, we wanted to, uh, budget you, but we wanted to start small to see how we'd work out.
Yep.
And I give two thumbs up.
Yep.
And so I think, uh, I think the budget request is reasonable. Gentlemen, any questions?
When we're looking at lights, are we talking lights on the common here or just for the tree?
Uh, so it's the lights all on the tree and everything that's in front of the town hall. So the balconies and all the lights in front of, and all the extension cords.
Now, how's this working with the garden club?
Yeah, because I thought the garden club did the trees before. Is that not right, or?
So the idea is that the light expense would be coming from rec. And the people and volunteer time and equipment comes from the garden club, um, to help put that all out. So I was here on Sunday with them, um, to decorate that tree, and then someone brings in a lift and they all bring their ladders. And I think for me, it's the, the people that is valuable, so if we can help with the expense of the lights, that, that's a trade-off.
Okay, so I didn't think we, I don't think we paid for any lighting before the lights were all.
We have in the past, um, I don't know if it came from the operating budget after an event, because they had excess funds and they wanted to replenish and get new lighting fixtures for the upcoming year.
Because it hasn't always been lit out there.
Well, it has been for at least five years, six years. We've bought lights and extension cords. We've funded it through the, um, the rec.
I don't remember doing it.
Okay, but for this year, I, I mean, they're, they're, I think it's a reasonable request. It's not terribly large. I think it's well within the, the period, and Halloween was, was a winner.
Yeah.
I think bored children came up here, then went around the neighborhoods.
Yeah, absolutely. The time change worked, um, and garden club was very happy.
And the police department supported the hours and announced them appropriately.
Can I, um, bring up one more thing with the voting? See those flashing lights up there?
Yep.
Those are me.
Think we had talked about not having any lights flashing from the neighborhood up here before, at those meetings.
I think you're right, but when I talked to Nora, she said, I need to get upstairs again to change the light to non-flashing. I thought she said, non-flashing. I'll look at the email. But when I came by.
When I left last week, only one side was flashing last week, so I thought they were broken, so I didn't say nothing, but I see, I come this week and they're both flashing.
Yeah, no, I think she did it the wrong way, so I will communicate to her that we need to change it back though.
That's a win-win.
On, on Sunday, they weren't flashing, so I didn't even realize that they were until I came up today. I was like, that's distracting.
Yeah, before we get, uh, some complaints about it, I think if we.
It's, it's nice to have a, just a subtle, you know, Dunbar's quiet, nice subtle.
Yes.
Restful, and we're respectful of the, uh, the date it's gonna come down to.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, have any more questions? Justin, Dave?
No, that looks good. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do know last year we did have a lot of lights that didn't work, so.
Maybe that's, yeah. There's gotta be replenish of that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, the tree looks great, by the way.
Yes, that took four hours, it was cold.
I don't know, you guys got it way out there, but it looks good.
Yes. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next item. Remember we did something in the past? Sometimes we give, uh, gift cards, sometimes we give turkey, sometimes we do nothing, sometimes.
I don't remember.
We.
No, just kidding.
What, what do you wanna give me, Dave?
Well, I'm thinking you have wine now, so you don't need too much. Get that bottle of wine.
There you go, but I won that. I had to pay for my ticket.
No, I brought it up because, um, somebody was mentioning it last week in the office, and I forgot. Just before Thanksgiving, the day before Thanksgiving lineup, we forgot the Thanksgiving cards. And so then, last year we did the same thing also. We doubled it for Christmas, so I'm in the, I think we should do the same thing, do the fifty dollars for Christmas and.
Yeah. So we did last year, same amount?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, if you get a list of, have, uh, maybe Joe Murray get the list of employees?
Actually, Hope's already working on that for me.
Okay.
And now, I would, I would like to make sure we include everybody that's up here in the town office, and then I know that the, I know that, uh, elected official is the road agent. I'd like to do it for him, and I'd like to do it for our town clerk. I think we subtract the selectman out of there. I don't think we should, we need it, but I think the other elected officials that.
So that was me, Pam, Judy, Linda, and Jeff.
Yeah, they're up here at the town office, so I think it's a.
They're the elected officials that do business in the town offices.
That's my own thought. What do you guys say?
So what, all elected officials besides us?
Yeah. Well. I wanted to say the office ones, because there are some elected officials that don't work, you know, daily at the office.
Yeah, 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 too, too much would find too come here, I think.
Yeah.
You do all or none.
Yeah. Well, you have some that just work the voting, that's why I didn't do all our officials.
True, true. I, I, I hear you there.
You know, so that's why I just did the ones that are working day in and day out for the town, whether it's at the office or.
Okay. So all, all full timers, all part timers, regular part timers, because the thing is, that would.
And those four elected officials, I think it was four, did you say?
Yeah.
Jeff, Linda.
Judy, Linda, and, um, Anne Lock. She comes in every week for checks.
We miss it.
Yeah, just wanna make sure we don't forget.
Do we come, what about the town library, library director?
They have their own budget to do their.
They, she's not a town.
I understood. And so I'm just going the name out there?
Yeah, yeah.
Tell me. And, uh, the police chief, I mean, fire chief?
He is not.
They're already, uh, employees.
We don't include them. They're volunteers. They, they've never gotten, uh.
Okay, just, I, I can be devil's advocate here, just making sure.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I think that's, that's the list I think we should stick with.
Okay. We ran into a trouble with part timers, you know, last year with one, if you work, you had one part timer work like one weekend and, I mean, like.
That's a way.
We kinda like nicked that last year. The regular part timers we won.
Yes.
Agreed? Consensus of regular part timers.
Yep.
I would just say, Lee, I would have Joe Murray prepare, and Hope prepare the list, and you just take a review of it?
I already have.
Okay.
But just waiting to hear if you needed to include anybody else.
No, I don't think so. I just wanna do the ones.
Four elected positions that you just mentioned now.
Yeah. Because those are the ones the public generally come up to see day in and day out for our town.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, consensus.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we have some, some money coming in. Do we have a check, Lee, for that?
We do. It's right there in front of you.
Okay.
I can give you a copy of the check.
Yeah.
It would be, um, number five on the top of the list.
Okay.
That's gonna pay for the old home pay increase.
Number five, right there. Someone mixed them up on there. Okay, just, uh, we have a, uh. In the past, I'm not gonna go into the names in particular privacy, but someone received assistance from July eighty-two to May eighty-three. And the town, local towns paid a portion. Uh, we got recoveries out of this. And so from the state of New Hampshire, because the state recovered monies, we were providing assistance, somehow, uh, we got a share of recovery of financial assistance for, uh, I, I won't discuss the, the case, leave the name private for.
That's the same assistance that we just funded?
No.
No, this is completely different. This happened in, uh, as, well before our time here.
It could either be, um, a vehicle accident that the fire department responded to, um, a domestic something that police department responded to. But it's something related to our emergency departments having to.
And so, so just not that. So basically, New Hampshire collected it and they passed it on to us, and so I'm, I'm ready to accept it. So I'll, I'll make a motion to accept eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and forty cents from the state of New Hampshire, uh, in their share of recovery of financial assistance.
I'll second Mike's motion if we put it in general fund under an anticipated funds.
That's where it's gonna go.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? General funds it is? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, let me get it solely. Okay, um. Justin, this was before your time, but Mr. Mike Guyney, um, at one point, um, came in, he wanted reimbursement for a post, insulation of the post that was damaged on his property, uh, during a plowing incident by one of our town employees. At the time, the selectmen had already approved the reimbursement for the post, and it never really occurred. And, uh, but for the installation of the post, uh, Mike was also requesting insulation of the post. It was twenty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents for the post and two hundred dollars for insulation. Here's the, what's the receipt, uh, receipt for that? And I could open for discussion and see which way you wanted to go on this. Any comments?
I'm just gonna say for the record, the same as Mike stated, the post had been approved several years back.
Right, and I think it's a, a shortcoming on our, on, on, on everyone's part, but the post was never really executed. And so, uh, we do definitely, for sure, have to reimburse them for the post, and that was pre-approved. Installation of the post, um, uh, I'm open, what are your suggestions? I have, uh, I have my thoughts on it. I don't.
The damaged post is in my office. Did you see it?
I did.
It's a six by six, about six foot tall.
Yeah, he only wants, uh, like thirty dollars, twenty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents for that, two hundred dollars for insulation of that.
I think because it was a previous issue that was a couple of years old now, that that should be paid for as it was discussed at that meeting of just the post, but that's just me.
Aye. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Was it installed?
No.
So why would we pay?
It's installed now, because I saw it being installed last week.
Oh, well, the homeowner installed it.
Okay, now it is, okay. I thought it wasn't installed.
No, we, the town was not gonna install it.
No, no.
Okay, I, I hear you.
I thought he didn't, never did it, and we're gonna pay him for not doing it.
No, he installed it.
Okay, yeah, I get it.
It's definitely there, Dave, gonna test of that.
Yep, that's good.
And I actually started the other day too, when I was up there on a walk around, walk boat.
I, I just wanna say that remembering other conversations at that meeting, because I think Jeff was here. Um, you know, mailboxes get hit by, this was hit by a plow truck trying to turn around, and it got hit by the wing. Jeff stated at that meeting that we do not pay for mailboxes or anything else, that, you know, we've been hard line with that because we be paying for mailboxes all over that get damaged by snow, so. I think we made a motion that night to pay for the post.
But tho, but those are in the right away, those are in town right away, the mailboxes that placed. This wasn't in town right away, then.
Well, at the time, it was in town right away.
That's the.
Be back at the.
I wasn't at that meeting, so.
We had, we had a first motion from the first court that said that that was the town right away at the time, because we were turning around back in front of the firing.
If this was already previously approved, this was obviously approved.
It's the replacement.
Well over eighteen months ago, if it was before my time, so I think we should stick to the previous approval on this.
That's what I thought also.
Yeah. Do I, I have no issue with that, but the, the labor too? I don't, I, I like to put it in the bin and get it behind us for two hundred dollars.
I just don't see why it's being brought up well over eighteen months. I hope it was before my time. I got elected last, last March. I just have, kinda think this is.
Yeah.
An odd scenario that we approve, or the post's replacement was approved and now we're asking for labor.
I, I feel, I feel that was a shortcoming of the board, and I think the board, uh, basically took it, we, we were responsible for that. I think we're, at the town, we failed reimbursing them in a timely manner for the post.
And there was no request for labor on the first.
No, there was not, as I recall. Okay, then we get consensus, uh, Justin, David, just for the post?
Yep.
Okay, just for the post. Please. Now, we'll move right on to mailbox items. Okay, um, if recall, Greg Miller went up and inspected above the transfer station. Do we recall that discussion last meeting, or should I authorize that? Um, he came back to it and made the repairs. We're just waiting on an invoice for that. He's got pictures here of the problem, the water damage and the contaminated insulation, and it's been rectified, Davey went to. Okay? So the only thing is, we gotta wait for the bill and he'll bill us appropriately?
I think he already billed us.
Okay.
Instead of just slight higher than originally.
Yeah.
It's nice to see that there really wasn't.
I don't think it was significant damage.
No, damage, no, but things, the insulation probably needed to be replaced.
Yeah.
Which is good.
And that's the safety concern, so.
Yeah. So that's an issue complete and put to bed. Okay. Item B. Okay. The mailbox, the, uh, mailbox, the temperature, talk, talk about some temperature over the, up at the second floor. It's forty-nine degrees yesterday and fifty degrees upstairs.
She just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that she's. She just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that she's holding events up there and that if their people are not. Um, dressed appropriately might find it very cold up there.
I've been curious. Top upstairs.
I think once there's a lot of bodies up there moving around and whatnot, you're probably not as noticeable.
And I, can I recommend that, can the doors be propped open too, from the?
They're not supposed to, but I think it needed to let some heat in, the second floor.
In the prior years, we were properly opened, um, I did ask, um, Brookside Mechanical, mechanical venues there. Because I know in that hallway to the front stairs, it's like ninety, ninety-five, that front hallway, and he did say that there is a, uh. Fire rated ventilation system. That can be event, that can be put in that wall that would allow heat to get into that other room, so I think we should look into that with him.
Yeah.
Um.
Are we gonna be over, overdoing that system, though, that?
No, that system, uh, when John, John just left, when we were sizing that out, that system was sized to run the entire building down in the basement, so. Uh, ductwork could be brought up to there, we wanted to wait to see how it was.
I was waiting to see.
Um, there's another thing that's going on, is the, um, the heating system in the entryway is being tripped and reverting back to AC.
Correct.
And I called Brookside Direct, so I had a bunch of emails from the town office here, and Brookside suggested that it's. They think that the thermostat is seeing a fluctuation in power, in other words, like slight power surges are hitting it. Causing it to revert back, so they're gonna do a, um. A power surge interrupter right on the outside unit to see if that stops it.
Like a surge predictor?
Yeah, so he told me he's gonna drive me over as quick as he can to install that, and I told him that Mary's not open till eight, he says I shouldn't have to go in the building, so. That was Dave from Brookside.
Tomorrow he's coming?
He didn't say tomorrow a hundred percent, but he's gonna try.
Okay, alright.
So if you see somebody from Brookside around the building, you'll know when it's about.
And I, I, for the record, I'd like to say, these are just growing pains that we have to, we should anticipate a few more hits.
And we knew that these were coming up with the heat system, now, there's also the ability to bring up some ductworks. Um, directly up in that front hall, to bring the duck heating up from downstairs into that room. And I did talk with Brookside about it and they said it's something we can look at.
Okay, if it stays, if it's unbearable up there, we'll, we'll have to look at that.
Yeah, and next year if we wanna.
Don't have them look at and give us a rough idea on price or?
Yeah, we can do that, if, and, um, next year, he said if we wanna look at heating and cooling, he said you may not wanna bring ductwork up there, because if you work on cooling, you will do it off of Mitsubishi setups.
Right, the smaller.
Which would add heat and cool, cause you're only talking about going from fifty-five up to sixty-five, you know, you know, you only wanna be at seventy if you're gonna have a meeting, so.
Yeah.
Okay, should we have them give us two options, doing the Mitsubishi's for heating cooling and.
I would say.
And doing ductwork, just see what the prices are, get a general, general idea.
Just so we have it somewhere we can budget something for next year.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it would be good to put in the budget for next year.
Cause all the way through our plan development, we knew that that heating system.
Was gonna be an issue, right, I, I would.
And I know we left the doors open, it was plenty warm last year, but we're not supposed to leave them open when there's an event. When there's no event, you probably could leave them open to warm it before the event. But.
Cause they're fire doors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Okay, so.
So we'll look into, we'll look into that.
So Mary's having an event, we might say to advise the mayor for the time being is to open the doors about thirty minutes before the event.
Yeah.
Yeah, thirty minutes to an hour if you can.
I guess like at least thirty minutes, I mean, it's not gonna warm up that quick. No, but it'll, I guess Mary will circulation.
And you'd be surprised when you put people in the room, how quick it does warm up.
Is there a comment?
Uh, yeah, just a question, do you, maybe, the, the height of the ceiling might be affecting that.
It, it does affect it some, obviously, it's fourteen feet in there.
Yeah, right, because I mean, you know, maybe, and I'm not suggesting this by any means, but maybe fans there.
I'm amazed that with, uh, with the older windows that are in there, I mean, they're, they're not old, old, but they're not new, new either, with the older windows. And fourteen feet tall.
Yeah.
Being fifty or fifty-five degrees is actually pretty good for not, no heat being on in there at all.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, that is good, especially the cold weather.
But we bought a big floor, uh, a stand-up fan system.
Yeah, there's a heat in there.
Yeah, but if you put it near the, propped open door and brought the heat in.
Yeah, yeah, I could do a little.
Before the event.
Yeah.
But the heat's still going up.
Yeah.
I know that when they were working there last year with the doors open, it was plenty hot up there, so.
Alright.
Yeah.
We decided to wait and not have a big deal, but yeah, I think it's time to get some estimates like Justin said from Brookside, so I'll see if.
I, I like the idea of the budget for it. So a little bit of heat, it could add a little bit of heat and a little bit of cooling too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I've been noticing they keep opening the same windows, and I've been called three times to close the window.
And they shouldn't be, yeah.
Because when they open the window up there for ventilation, which is fine, nobody knows how to shut it, cause they're trying to lock it without holding the top, upper sash up.
And they're heavy.
And the sash are so big, if you don't hold up on the glass and lower the load, you can't lock.
We, we did it, but the thing is, it, it has, you have to be, it's tricky.
Right, I've been called three times to pop there and I, I just locked them a couple of weeks ago for Mary again, so. I'm hoping they're done opening it for the winter.
Okay, well, just, well, let's continue on with that, but I like the idea of the quotes, so we can budget for it.
Yeah, we can kind of, uh, maybe you said bring up one duck and then do these or something.
Well, at least we know even if it comes up for, you know, the ones we had talked about, about, uh, senior centers and the, uh, cooling, cooling centers.
Cause in this back corner here, we don't use that, um, we don't use the fluid all there, it's where the old fireplace, so. One duck could go up in that, obviously. The, um, as a correlator, just, uh, speaking of that back room, the tables and chairs are brought there, they, they fit nicely there.
Everyone said that they fit very nicely where they are, they're convenient and easy to get to and.
I oversaw that happening and Lean gave us this, uh, on the off day.
So we have, uh, five round plastic tables?
I think it was six.
So, one thing I did notice and I'll just bring to your attention, that door handle, I had, um. They were doing the Christmas lights and they said that their pin was not working to get into the building.
Cause the handle doesn't push in.
That's right, and, and Mary, so, cause I went up there to reprogram.
I showed Mary that back a month and a half ago, because she was locking herself out of her own building.
Well, she explained it to me and we saw the, the movement on the handle, and I have explained it to the ones with events in the near future that. If you have difficulties, push your handle in and then try your pin, it will work, because I went in to reprogram them, they were all in there.
The good thing with the lever handle is handicap people can move it, the bad thing about lever handles, people have all kinds of leverage to pull on the knob.
Oh, and that's what they're doing, as they're turning and.
It's a, it's a weak point. And they're giving us all new hardware, but I'm gonna say out loud, I don't know if it's gonna fix it, cause people pull so darn hard on those.
You can't change it to the, just the push thing?
Well, for handicap, you need a lever.
Oh, okay.
Okay, let's continue on, the next item was here right there, it's, um, Dave, Dave, I wanna give you, Pro Technologies was having, we having some trouble with, um, the alarm codes.
Yeah.
And Dave has already sent down, they, uh, gave some direction, and I think Lean, you reacted upon that?
I already have, yeah.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, cause Mary was going down the wrong road, I think, again, or she gave two names that were wrong.
Right.
So Lean's our.
But we, we did our homework, we checked with Chrome Technology, we checked with Dunbar and Telephone, it's still not.
So who are you talking about?
Now, now you have directed me to Irish Electric, who hired the company to install the panel.
Cause we paid twelve thousand for the new panel.
Yeah.
And the company installed it, I think this company needs to look at it for the proper code.
Which makes sense, and that's what I forwarded to, um, Irish Electric.
Yeah.
So.
And, uh, who's the guy that worked with us for Irish, George, I think George?
I don't know, but the girl that I'm working with, that I ask for help all the time, she is very prompt.
Oh, good.
So she's fixed the, she's scheduled.
So if she can't figure who it was, it's George.
George, you think it is?
He was the project manager.
Okay, project manager, George, okay.
He at least know the name of the alarm company.
Continuing on, we have, uh, so thank you for doing that, Dave, thank you.
Yeah.
Quitting people in the right direction. Alright, we have, um, bids now for the gutters, I think we have all three bids in now?
Yep.
And, uh. For all the right size, six inch, yes?
No, there's the, uh, there's two that are six inch, one's still five inch, I think spoke about last meeting, they don't, they don't offer a six inch option.
Alright.
Um, they're middle of the road anyways, if you compare all three quotes.
Okay.
Um. I wasn't the one to meet the builders, um, not sure if you did, Lean?
Nope, I did not.
But I think info was sent to him or if you came on site.
So gutter plus one to go to that, Dave, that's a, that's a, that's appropriate one. And the other one was, uh, builders, you said, builders install products.
Do they put a linear foot of what, in their quotes, maybe we can look if they put.
It's, um, builders, um, quote is pretty vague, so it's. Um. Hard to understand exactly what they're doing, gutters plus had all those pictures on the previous, from last year that we have. Um, I had solicited from them.
With the, uh.
That's how they got to their quote and we have pictures of that.
It's, it's.
Um.
It's one price and then another price for the gutter guards.
Correct, and then gutter, gutter done here, um, they have it all mapped out of how, where the gutters are going and everything, so.
That's the second one.
Just builders did not, no, no depiction or.
That's a pretty, uh.
I know, I saw them all, I read the email.
Yeah, and then the last one is just five inch and that's a little small.
Yeah. I mean, based on price wise, I've seen builders do, do gutters, I've had them do one of my projects in years past. It, it just would be nice to see, uh, some sort of detail of making sure that. It's consistent with the other quotes, cause there's a few smaller roofs on this back, back of the building that I had asked those two companies to quote.
I, I feel comfortable with asking them for a few more details on their bid, and then if they're ha, then I feel comfortable going with them if, if the bid still stands.
Yeah, I'm comfortable too. I would, I think that we can, um. My thought is, I just had him do my daughter's house and I just had him do another residence in Dunbar. And, um, I can tell this is for the entire building, I don't know if it's for the, the little, um, entries. But those little entries would not add.
The price difference, I, I understand.
Might add five hundred dollars to it, you know, which is still way under those, so.
It's kind of, the difference is huge.
So I'm thinking we should vote and accept the bid for this and then just ask for clarification, and if they're not doing the two little entries, then we can ask them to do those.
Yeah, cause I think that was these two back ones and then also the oil tank room, so was there ev- every roof line here? And they'll replace.
All the eaves.
They'll replace any fascia if it's rotted?
They'll only do it if.
No, it's for additional cost.
Yeah, and we probably would have our handyman do it.
Uh, this, this roof doesn't have any of that anyways, it, oh, it, that overhang is way past the fascia anyways. Okay, good. So they're, they're using different style brackets.
And as I said, this, this is to protect our paint job over there.
Yeah, that and the slop, yeah, the splashback on the bottom.
And, uh, keep drainage from getting in the basement, okay. They make a proposal.
There's still, but, there's still maybe some drainage we may have to account for, because these are only supplying downspouts and now it's gonna be directed to certain. Certain spots of the building, so we may have to address some drainage now that everything's getting forced into one spot, you know what I mean?
Oh, great.
Um. And things, if we go this way, we'll have flooding problems.
Why aren't we doing it? Oh, cause the splash up on the bottom.
Splash up on the bottom to try and protect the paint job, I just.
Well, let's give it a try, if not, we'll have to just take the downspouts off and plow them up.
What leaves, what lea.
I'll make a proposal to accept a bid from builders and simulation installed products. Um, the first proposal is for thirty-three hundred dollars for the gutters at ten eleven School Street, and the second proposal. Um, is two thousand eighty dollars for gutters, covers at one thousand ten, one thousand eleven School Street.
For a total of fifty-three eighty?
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Just some, based on clarification as well about all the roofs. And I won't say it's subject clarification, but we do want clarification, Lean, before, uh, before they execute work on it.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, he, I agree with Dave, I don't think it's gonna be, uh, uh, anywhere close to the other, because we're not gonna release it publicly here at this point.
So if you need to add those other roofs to it.
Just do it.
Yeah, to, talking me five hundred dollars.
So there's two prices on there, there's three, three hundred and.
Thirty-three hundred.
And two thousand eighty dollars, the other, with, with the gut, uh.
With gutter guards.
And you guys do want the gutter guards, right, it's enough trees.
Yeah, there's the trees behind it, the back cemetery that. Okay, um. This is, uh, from, uh, Hope RC, we have a, uh, a memo regarding, um. Outstanding leave, this is people who have extra, extra leave, usually, you, will use by twelve thirty-one, and, and, and people asking for rolvers and there's now requests for rolvers and we have, uh.
So every year in the month of October, the board has asked me to send out a memo to the full-time staff to make, to remind them. The end of the year is around the corner and to utilize your leave time, cause we have a policy where if you don't use it, you lose it and or with exception.
And a request.
So, um, the police department reassured me with, if you see the cover sheet, there's one officer that has, um, some substantial time left. Um, Chris did reaffirm today that he would be using up that time in the month of December. Um, the building administrator is using up twenty-four per hours, that will leave her six and a half hours left. He's asking to be, um, paid out that leave time, um, she's not sure if she can, yes, building.
Okay.
And then myself, I have a couple of requests in there for some time off that I will attempt to make, uh, take off. Um, understanding that this is the busiest time of the year for me and, um, on occasion, I have a lot of hours early on in the week and. The full requested time off may not come to fruition because I've already put in too many hours to, to u- utilize sixteen hours in one week. So there could be potentially about twenty-five hours left on my.
Twenty-five hours on yours?
Yeah.
Six or so on hers?
Yeah.
And Chris is gonna use all his.
Chris is gonna use his, he's got forty weeks, forty hours, he's gonna, he's got a week plan.
Transfer station have any?
I haven't heard from him, he's the only one I have not, and they all got the memo to report to the board in an email, so that we could get, um, the board to discuss it. So he does have a few hours there, and as the board knows, any comp time is calculated based on time and a half. Um, we have a policy where they can accrue up to forty hours and, um, policy is if they don't, uh, use the, um, comp time. That has to buy, if I'm gonna labor laws, be reimbursed by the end of the year, so, um. We don't typically get a request for any comp time, we will disperse it if come the last week of December there.
How much time is left for transfer station?
Very top line, the top.
Forty?
Is it forty plus?
Forty and forty, vacation balance is forty?
Yeah, forty, and then there's two personal days? Sixteen?
No, just cause comp balance forty also.
Oh, that's what it is, but that will have to be paid out whether he, he uses it or not. So we're looking at about forty hours, I thought there was sixty, did I not? And this, eight personal days?
It doesn't say that, man, this is forty of forty.
Comp time and personal time, Patrick, uh, forty, yeah, that's it, that is correct, so. This will absolutely get paid out, but this is what he has left, so without a request, I'm assuming he may have time to take it for the end of the year, but. I didn't receive any requests, but then.
Okay.
Okay, I have no issue with that, Mike.
No.
Mike?
Yep. We got, transfer guy here now, we could ask if you want to clarify that.
Okay.
Woody, we're just going over, uh, end of year time that's gonna be used?
Got a letter.
Okay. Little different department heads and whatnot, to see what's left over. Okay.
I would have only had two vacation days, but I ended up using three bereavement days when my father-in-law died, so.
Mm-hmm.
That would have been vacation time and not.
Yeah, just reviewing, you have forty and forty and you'd like to use them all, I mean, they could get paid for them all. So between now and the end, do you have no other vacation days scheduled?
No, I, these, I have two new employees that really need to, I need to spend some one-on-one time with.
Yeah.
Cause I feel that they're not being failing, you know what I mean, they're kinda thrown into a mix.
Yeah.
And. They need to get some one-on-one training.
Okay. Okay, you guys have any questions on comp time?
No.
Yeah, okay, moving on. You open up for the public comment?
Okay, I do have something again, so, what, just wanted to remind the board about the current use. I just after we last spoke with, with uh, the conservation commission about that money, so they get. I happened to read this nice magazine here, Wildlife Journal, and there's a good article in here about current use. And how that money is spent, well-spent and everything. Conservation wise.
Can I see what it is, the Wildlife Journal you're saying?
Yeah, Wildlife Journal.
Hmm? Where do you get that, right, from? Oh, okay. Can we get a copy of that, so Lean can make a copy for, you know, read it?
Have it now.
Okay, okay.
I highlighted that a certain section here, isn't it, and it doesn't relate to the cost that the town is saving, it relates to. Why the open space is all important, so there's a lot of factors involved in taking that money away, you're, but you're a lot of stuff that you're losing.
Tie their hands.
Or that little tiny bit of money that you think you're gaining.
Right.
You're losing a lot, you know?
Yeah.
So, I, I read that just after we had that meeting and I was like, what a good time to read that.
Yeah. I'd share that with you.
Thank you for a reason.
Okay, you ready for the non-public?
Yeah.
And so are you with this, Jim? Okay.
I wouldn't call him a gentleman, but.
Alright, let's continue on, um, I'm gonna bring it back to the board, Lean? Before going to non-public? Okay, back to the board, David, anything?
Why don't you go to Justin first, cause I think they do have something.
Okay, Justin.
Alright.
I'm gonna start then, Dave, I'm gonna say November twenty-eighth of this month marked the Chief Romanar's fifteenth year of service to Dunbar. Uh, he's the longest serving officer in the history of Dunbar Police Department, he started his career in two thousand eight as a Z O E officer.
Longest full-time?
Longest full-time, he started in two thousand eight as a part-timer, when he was always working as a marine patrol officer. Then he served as a full-time since two, twenty-ten, he sworn as a police chief in twenty-twenty-two. And uh, he's sir, I think he serves to the highest standards and is earning a reputation for being a top-notch, highly, highly respected law enforcement professional. Um, he's a, he's been a, a, a real asset to Dunbar, and so I, I wish to uh, thank him for his dedication to the community. And to the uh, citizens of Dunbar and to the people he worked with. And uh, for the record, I saw him on television, he actually responded to the uh, the hospital, one was up there, him and another officer, one of our officers responded. Although I have to, I gave a little bit of jazz, because he was not wearing his official uniform, he just scooted in the laundry. And uh, he was wearing khaki pants with appropriate protective gear, but I think it's kudos to Chief Romanar, as he persists, thank you, Chief. Uh, as he marks his milestone fifteenth year, um, we were non-public tonight, I'd go into tonight, and so I'd like to. Make it, Dave, anything for, for the group?
I do, I have been um, chasing down stone requests for the building.
Yes.
Um, I had a price, I think at last week's meeting, of that building for eighteen hundred to do the stone and the riverstone all the way around it. Um, to take care of the drip line, six inches out past the drip line on three sides that aren't done.
Right.
And I had another bid come in, um, for this building of eight fifty to bring it up to level all the way around the entire building. I've chased three suppliers. Uh, two promised to get back to me, only one did, and this is after a month's worth of tracing, so I think that we should uh. Move ahead on those and I'll get them forwarded to Lean.
This is something that's gonna get done this year, that'll help both with the gutters, because those have.
I think that we could possibly get this one filled up this year, that one I'd like to, um. Hold the money from out, what do you call it, Lean?
Encumber.
Like to encumber the money for that one, but have that one done this spring, only cause I want that turf taken out that's six inches past the drip line. So that existing turf, I would like taken out and then have the proper paper put down.
Cause it's frozen on this side of the building?
Yeah. Not paper, but a, fabric, like.
Yeah.
Like a landscape firm. So I, I would like to encumber that money too, but I'll get those two quotes sent into Lean, but I'd like to get a motion from the board of those.
Eighteen hundred, does that include removing the turf?
It does, yeah.
Okay.
It's a complete job.
And a fifty complete job here?
Yes.
That's reasonable for here.
Yeah, I just gotta make sure in the spring they do it before the bark mulch, cause they get on it pretty quick and spring the bark mulch.
This building here is gonna have the same stone that's existing in it, and that one will have the riverstone.
They, they can actually move much now, it's not frozen yet, is it?
Uh.
The ground?
No, the ground's starting to freeze.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, they could jackhammer it out, but I think. Okay. And they, and they could put the stone around where the other stone is existing there.
They just gotta come back to level.
But they have to come back anyway, so just gonna do it one time in the spring.
Agreed, it would save them a lot of stone. Okay, Lean, if you, I think we are consensus. We don't, we don't have, we don't have.
You wanna make a motion, consensus?
We should do it as a motion, Mike.
Okay.
So make a motion for those.
I make a motion to approve uh, for a price of eighteen hundred dollars and eight hundred fifty dollars for the following buildings in order. Library and the town offices for riverstone drippage around the buildings.
And we'll call it the library slash town hall.
Library slash town hall.
I'll second those.
Lean, I'd like to get something in writing before.
Yeah, you said you could forward it to me?
Yeah, I couldn't just find it, I would forward it.
I need something writing, we'll tentatively approve it, all in favor.
Alright.